Welcome everybody to the zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing, Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? Luke, can you make that motion?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we have a pending decision. First, before we go to the pending decisions, in attendance, we have our village planner, Alex Wallach, we have board members, Luke Ferrin, myself, Mark Greenwald, Julia McCormick and Susan Stevenson, Joyce Jiffer is absent tonight, and also we have our legal counsel, Jeffrey Blinkoff. We can move forward with the first pending decision is case number 3131, Smithtown Partners, 40 Meadow Lane. We are not ready to move forward with a decision on case number 3131. We found that there was a minor error with respect to the letter of disapproval. That was the genesis of the hearing. So we are going to await guidance from legal counsel as to whether we need to reopen the hearing, which we believe we may have to do. And also, we're in conversations with the applicant as to how they wish to proceed. So with respect to case number 3131, Smithtown Partners were were holding off on rendering a decision there. With respect to case number 3138, 230 Elm Street, the hearing is closed. And we are preparing a decision. Legal counsel has guidance being formulated for us with respect to statute of limitations issues and time bars. But with respect to the merits, do we want to, among the board members, have any conversation? Or do we have any questions for each other? With respect to how we would like to proceed with the applicant's request with regard to an interpretation of the certificate of occupancy and a request to overturn the issue of the building permit for interior alterations for a catering facility. So does anybody want to want to speak to this or express their views?
Well, I'll, I'll start, I guess, just by saying, I think the building permit is valid. And I would not vote to overturn it.
I find the timeline for the both a certificate of occupancy as well as the issuance of the building permit work that Mr. Blinkoff is preparing for our review, I think is critically important for this particular case. And I'm eager to read what that opinion will be. And what guidance we can get about it.
Susan, do you want to say anything at this juncture?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we, we hold off, you know, pending advice of counsel to see whether we're, we're getting to the merits of the application? And, and, and how we would, how we would decide this. So we can move on to case number 3132, which is 370 Great Plains, we do need to motion, and I will motion to accept the applicant's request to adjourn to July 28th, 2022. Can I have a second?
Second.
So all in favor of agreeing to the applicant's request to adjourn to July 28th, 2022, case number 3132, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So then we move to case number 3137, John Bennett is applicant, 85 Hildreth Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes, he is. Hang on one second and I'll bring him in. Okay, John, if you could just turn your camera on and unmute yourself, that'd be great.
How's that? Can everyone see me and hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the left, well, just let me know if you want me to proceed.
Yes, please.
There, there are two issues here. One is the fact that the building permit was issued for windows that first of all, let me back up, there was never any review by the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation. That's the applicant, I'm sorry, the homeowner doesn't, doesn't even argue that. So this, so, so that's the first issue. The second issue is the unequivocally, as everyone acknowledged, and even the applicant acknowledged that the building permit application for the windows specifically stated that they were white. So this is important from a timeless, timeliness point of view, because even though I have two responses to Mr. Blinkoff's question about timeliness, what is clearly not even before to be considered is the timeliness of the attack on the color of the windows, because the building permit was issued that white, he put in black. There's no certificate of compliance has been issued for the building permit. Every time you make a request for a building permit, you have to do the work and get a certificate of compliance. And the certificate of compliance has to be for work that conforms with the building permit. So fenestration, i.e. the fact that he said he was going to do like kind and put indoors instead of windows, fenestration, the, the shape of the windows aside, the building permit said white, he didn't put in white. There's no certificate of compliance has been issued. So there's no question of ripeness on that, because he hasn't, I could attack the certificate. The, the, the time wouldn't start until the certificate of compliance was wrongly issued, if it was issued for these black windows. So there's not time at all in terms of, in terms of the color. Number two, as it relates to the fenestration, I provided last time orally with citations, three cases which stand for the proposition that if you have a permit that has to be, before it's issued, referred to another agency by statute, by law, such as in this case, where the Village Code itself says that a building permit can't issue until it's referred to the Architecture Review Board and Historic Preservation. There's no time, and, and that doesn't happen. The permit is void ab initio, which means the time never started to run. And I, I, I put in three, I, I, I gave you three appellate division cases for that orally the last time. And I put that in, in a letter to the board. And then, and then finally, the board can always suisprate, or on their own motion, raise these issues, which I gave you authority for that as well, requiring that the windows be refitted. A building permit issued in error cannot confer rights and contravention of the zoning law. You gotta moot that. And is subject to corrective action, even when the results may be harsh. But finally, this matter is before the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation, where if you, I would just ask that you watch the, and this, this is a question of quasi judicial economy, as it were. I would, because you may not even have to take any action, I just respectfully ask that you watch the video of the ARB meeting, in which three of the board members said they weren't bound, because they're there for a brand new house by these windows, which they all agreed were not, they've been called existing, but they're not existing because they're not legal. And interest, and, and three of them said, we want to see double hung traditional windows there, because it's all the neighborhood. And, and, and all of them didn't like the color. So you should, my guess is, and it's up to you, because it's your calendar, and it's up to you, how do you want to deal these things? But the issue may resolve itself. I can't even tell you what the what the, whether or not the applicant, the homeowner, is going to take the direction of the ARB, because they adjourned the meeting on Monday, and they're submitting new plans. So again, this is totally up to you, fully within your discretion. But it may make sense in terms of saving everybody work and time and energy and effort, just to see what the ARB does with it. But again, if you don't want to do that, certainly, there's no timeliness issue whatsoever on the color, because there's been no certificate of compliance issued for a building permit that was, was, the, the work was done contrary to the expressed terms of the building permit, i.e. white windows. Secondly, I think there's plenty of authority that where you have a permit that is by statute, let alone the village statute, requires the referral to another board in order to be valid. That permits void ab initio and not subject to the village law sections on timeliness of a complaint. But again, you may just want to sort of, and see what happens with the ARB. It may very well resolve itself. The applicant said that, okay, we were listening to you on colors, and three of the board members said, we want to see double hung windows on this thing. Up to you.
Do any board members have any questions or comments?
Yes. Um, I was thinking about this. Just as if, in the sense that, how would you know that your neighbor was doing something as extensive as this before it happened? Does anyone, Mr. Bennett, do you have an answer?
I don't know. The, the problem with this is a lot of this confusion is the applicant's own making. Susan, you saw when he was before the board, and he said, um, Mr. Bennett's trying to make me the bad guy here. Well, every single meeting, and now he's continued the same practice with the zoning Board of Appeals, it was a different plan. I mean, with the ARB, excuse me. It was a different plan, and now it's the same thing. So I, I've had to point out on numerous occasions, the illegality of the plans. And, you know, one of the reasons you're only dealing with one of the three requests before you on my application is that, you know, he saw, oh, yeah, I, I can't have the pool in that location. And I can't have the shed here, and I can't have some other things. It's literally, I, I, I know I sound cynical and jerky, but it's literally been like a three card Monte.
Well, some of us might not disagree with that, but I just, I feel like this is a situation that it's not particularly conducive to a happy village. And if it were, and so I just don't understand how something is, so I've thought about the house. If you change all the windows and the doors, a house of that size, as it exists now, that's an extensive change, not a minimal change. I also feel if you change the windows to doors, that that would be what I would call construction. I don't know about the building department. But more importantly, I want to know how anyone would know that they proposed to do that before they got the permit. You wouldn't, is that right? He went to the building department and they gave him a permit, right?
Yep.
Okay.
You would not know. There would be no required notice.
That's right. And so the whole point of what we do, in a sense, is there's notice. The neighbors, the community gets a sense of what's proposed.
If you look at those
Something of an issue.
I'm sorry, if you look at the, at the case law, the judicial gloss on the section that Mr. Blinkoff cited, which again, because of other case law that I prohibited, other case law that, which I've shown you, number one, and also because of the fact that the color issue is not, is, is, hasn't even ripened, because he doesn't get a certificate of compliance. But if you look at the case law, this, it's not 60 days from the building permit, it's 60 days from when someone got, had knowledge of it. So the workings of the building department in most instances are, 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 you know, there's no notice, nothing happens, everything. So it's interesting, and I, I took a little dig, if I may, I'm sorry, that this is an issue that's usually a defense. It's not a jurisdictional issue, it's a defense that's raised by the, the homeowner, or, or the other person, or, or anybody who's claiming that it's time barred. It's a defense that raised, and they have to demonstrate some objective timeline when it was appropriate, that there was knowledge.
Okay, I'm just, I just
Fine, I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, I just feel like it's, it's, it's an unfortunate situation, and one that I don't think I've ever encountered in working on these boards. And so I was just hoping that there would be some light to how we could not be, that, that this wouldn't happen again in this way. That's all I'm saying.
Well, if there'd been the required reference, it's much more likely that, you know, it would have been known to the public, because there are certain notification requirements with the ARB, as we all know. I mean, the list, even if there's not a specific notification, notification, but the list, the agenda is published, all that stuff and everything. So that, that's one of the reasons why I'm sort of scratching my head. It's very unusual for me to be opposing someone's building permit. I just feel like I make sure that my clients do the right thing, and even if they want to do something that's not according to the code, we file a variance application for it. This just didn't how to get a building permit for a fenestration change without going to the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation? It's void ab initio.
Do any other board members have, have any other comments? And I do think, you know, I, I would be leading toward just adjourning this pending ARB, the ARB determination, because, well, for, for several reasons, but what did the other board members feel? Luke, do you have any?
I think that's a good idea.
To do, Luke?
Yeah, well, all right, so, well, let's think about that. So let's say that the homeowner does get approval from the Architecture Review Board for these black windows. He's still in noncompliance with the original building permit that says white windows, would a new permit be issued, because there's a larger scope of work now, it would be an addendum to a additional permit? And then we do overturn the building permit, and so then he goes back to the Architecture Review Board.
No, because, because the, the, the second building permit issued pursuant to the ARB determination would
Would supersede the first?
Sure.
John, do you think that would satisfy your issues?
No, what I'm saying is, why do this work and struggle with this thing if it may resolve itself in the ARB? That's all. I'm, I'm trying actually not to be, you know, a push on every, you know, as a litigator, I like to push on every possible lever, you know, and put as much pressure as possible on things. But I also realize, from just a community point of view, it may resolve itself. It may resolve itself in the ARB. The, the last time they were there, the architects said they were willing to look at color. And the last time we were there, three of the board, three of the, three of the, all, none of the board members liked the color. And three of the five board members said, we want to see double hung windows, just like every other house, and then in, in Hildreth and Jennings, every other house.
Right. Well, the architecture board is, is the place for an application of this scale.
Excuse me?
For sure. The, the ARB is the place to be for an application of this scope of work, so.
Yeah, Luke, I, I will tell you that, you know, I, I'm scratching my head. You as a practicing architect, anytime you want to change fenestration, you know, you go and file a building permit. If I want to take a Marvin window out of a hole in an exterior wall and put the same window in and repair it, I don't have to go to the, as I said, if somebody sent me the ARB, I'd ask them if they were crazy. But if you want to make the hole bigger, or you want to make a window to a door, or something like that, and that's a change in fenestration, it's got to go to the ARB. Even if it's one, you know, so I
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I mean, probably there should be some latitude, but not, you know, probably, you know, I mean, you know, in the old days, you could, one ARB member could sign off on stuff like this, or, or, you know, or, or, you know, if they weren't really changing something so drastically. But these are windows, double hung windows, that went to big metal steel aluminum doors.
Julie, do you have, do you have any thoughts or comments?
You're muted.
Nothing additional at this time. I'm in agreement with waiting to see what happens with the ARB. I'm adjourning it for now, until that time.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn case number 3137, 85 Hildreth Street, pending the determination by the Architecture Review Board. Can I have a second?
Second.
And then all in favor?
That's really good.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so unanimously, we will, we will adjourn case number 3137, pending ARB, the ARB determination. And, and thank you, John.
Yeah, it just seems to make the most sense. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if there was anybody else here on this application.
I didn't, you know, something, I didn't see it, but
No hands are up.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you, you were right. I should have asked. And so no hands are up.
Oh, there's, there's no opposition? Can I withdraw my
As you said that, Cee Lou's hand just went up.
Okay.
How do you want me to, you want me to take John?
No, but yeah. Yeah, let, let's let her in, sure. And, but let, let, let John exit.
Let John exit. Okay, I'm gonna take John out, one second. Okay, Cee Lou, if you could just turn on your camera and unmute yourself, please.
Hi, this is Cee Lou, architect for 85 Hildreth. And I actually don't have much to say, just wanted to say, we're working with ARB. And then the family just welcomed a new baby, so we didn't really have a chance to work on anything, but we are working with the ARB.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Bear with me.
Internet, okay.
There you go. I took her out. Okay.
So I'd like to move on to our new cases. The first is case number 3139, Robert Kornstein and Sherri Goddessman at 43 Bailey Road. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I have John and Bailey here. Do you want me to bring both in at the same time? Because I mean, they're together.
I missed your first, the first part of what you said.
Um, I have John and Bailey both here. So did you want me to bring both of them in?
Sure, sure. If they'd like that.
Mark, there's a letter on this application from my father, as it happens. So I will recuse myself from this conversation. How do you want to do this? Should I leave the meeting? And do you want to text me when?
Luke, you just have to shut off your camera, right?
Yeah, you just have to shut off your camera and mute yourself, and you can
Okay.
You, you can certainly watch.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's virtual, so he can't kick anybody under the table. Sure, just, I, we filed the affidavits and mailing and posting, so should I just proceed? You tell me, folks.
Yes, please, go forward.
Okay, I, I, um, is this, hold on a quick second. I think you only have two hearings, so I'll try to be really quick. Because I think it's pretty straightforward. So this is Bailey Road. It's a private road. It's a narrow road, but it's a private road on, on the western part of the, of the village. Just a butts, I'm assuming people are familiar with Bailey Road. It's just, if, if you're, if you come down to the very end of Bailey Road, you're, you're staring at the town and the art village.
He froze.
We, we lost John.
Yeah. Bailey, are you able to hear us?
She's frozen too, it looks like. All right, just give them a minute. They should come back in, all right, Antoinette?
Okay, I'll look for their hands, Kat.
Perfect. In the meantime, Antoinette, I'm gonna send him another link.
Okay.
Bailey's back.
Bailey, are you with us? Can we proceed?
We can't hear them. We can see you both, but we can't hear you.
It's connecting.
John.
John, unmute. I'm asking. Ask to unmute, John.
Hello?
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I, I just have to say, this is, I, I, I'm an old timer, I know, so my apologies. But this is another reason why I wish we were, you know, in, in there in person. I just, it does too much for my, for an, for an older man, it does too much for my tension level, so. Okay, sorry. But in any event, I don't know where you guys lost me. I was talking about Bailey Road and
Right, right at the beginning. You, you have, we have, we don't have very much.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The private road, period.
Okay, Bailey, okay. The Bailey Road is a private road. It's in the westerly part of the village. And I was saying, just for those of you who don't know where it is, but I'm sure most of you do, if you're, if you're on, if you're heading west on, on Bailey Road and you get to the end, you're staring at the town and the art village, so. But it's a, it's a narrow road, nevertheless, it has, is developed with some nice homes. There are lots towards the westerly end that are conforming lots, but this lot, as with most of the lots, is easterly end. But this lot, as with most of the lots, on the westerly end are, are nonconforming. We're a little bit over 20,000 square feet and we're in an R40 zone. So what we're trying to do here is put some additions on the front at, of the, of the house, at the existing 34.2 feet setback. There is a little bit of a porch that has a, a shorter setback, which has a certificate of occupancy. I'll talk about that a little bit later. We're talking about keeping that, but making it not quite as wide, but that's a minor part of the application. The, the primary part of the application is to put some additions on the house, some second story additions and some first story additions. Really change the character of the house in a lot of ways, we think for the better. Not that aesthetics is, is something that drives your decisions, but we think it's important. In any event, the, the existing setback is 34.2 feet. This was, parcel was created by, in 1987 as a two lot subdivision, and they were, the, the lots were allowed to be, the houses were allowed to be at 34 feet. So what we're talking about now is adding some additions that are, will still be under the GFA, of course. We don't need any relief for that. Still under the lot coverage, we don't need any relief for that. And we don't think that there is any demonstrable change in the character of the neighborhood. That's an important thing. As everyone knows, there are five standards for the zoning tests. And one of the, one of them, of course, is there'll be no change in the character of the neighborhood. If you look at the case law and you look at the commentary, they'll tell you, particularly Terry Rice's commentaries to the, the village law sections, which is where your power comes from, in the McKinney sections, they'll tell you that those five standards are not actually weighted all the same. Clearly, the most important one is impact on the character of the neighborhood, and that makes sense. If you want to do something, if you want relief for something, the law wants to make sure, and you should make sure, that there's no significant change to the character of the neighborhood. So is there any change to the character of the neighborhood here? We're not proposing to increase any front yard setback. We're not imposing anything other than changes to an additional, to, to an existing house. Now, interestingly, in terms of impact on the character of the neighborhood, one of the most significant issue is what the neighbors themselves feel, and that's not unusual. So we have, you have four letters sent directly from adjoining neighbors, Pam Kraus and Jim Bradford at 65 Bailey Road. Uh, Pam Kraus and Jim Bradford at sixty-five Bailey Road, Amy and Richard Plum at one thirty-one Bailey Road, Eric of, of Folkenmare at one seventeen Bailey Road, and Michael Faran, which is the reason why Luke obviously recused himself at fifty-nine Bailey Road. Now, uh, this issue has come up in two separate matters, uh, that I've litigated. Once, one is Coleman versus Corman, which I litigated back in nineteen ninety-two. That was against this board, actually. That, the applicant requested a, a side yard and a rear yard relief for half the setbacks, and there were numerous letters of support, and the Supreme Court Suffolk County said, uh, you know, this is not going to change the character of the neighborhood, and probably the best indication of that is the fact that the neighbors are supportive of it, are supportive of it. And then in another case I litigated, but actually went up to the, uh, Second Department, Dolphin Lane versus Shelter Island. It's interesting what happened in that case. In that case, my, 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 uh, my applicant wanted to take an existing setback and add habitable space in the existing setback. Uh, and there were many, many na- letters of su- support from the neighbors. The Shelter Island Zoning Board of Appeals refused to grant the relief. The Supreme Court Suffolk County overturned it, and the appellate division affirmed it. Uh, and the only reason I bring that to your attention is because letters of support can, in certain instances, you know, not have any impact, but when you're talking about character of the neighborhood of, as one of the character, uh, as one of the char- one of the five-part tests that you have to meet, the courts have recognized that that is a significant issue, but even absent those letters, the, the facts speak for themselves. We're not further extending. This is a single-family residence. We're going from, I think we're adding one bedroom, which is gonna necessitate an IA system, which is a great thing. We're gonna have to put an IA system in there. Uh, and, uh, you can, you can, you can add that as a condition if you want, because it's not something that, uh, that we're hiding from. We'd have to do it anyway. Uh, and, you know, even if we were to rearrange plans and do away with one bedroom, I'm gonna tell you right now, uh, which we don't have any intention to, but we, the relief, if you grant the relief, uh, regardless of the number of bedrooms, we will put an IA system, because that's the good thing to do and, and to be a good neighbor. So it's, it's difficult to, to, for me to fathom how this would have any impact on the character of the neighborhood. We have an existing house at that setback. We also are doing something that we're increasing in the non-conforming area by less than fifty percent. Now, I bring that up with a lot of explanation. The Village Code says that you can increase a pre-existing non-conforming structure, you can increase the degree of non-conformity, the degree of non-conformity, up to fifty percent. So what we did is we did the calculation, uh, and it speaks to how minimal, I think, the minimalist the variance is. We did a calculation in which we're only increasing the non-conforming area by thirty-four point seven percent. That's what the Village Code says. But interestingly, even though that sits in the Village Code, that section, and even though we don't want more than fifty percent, less than fifty percent, thirty-four point seven percent. There's a case, uh, that the village litigated very strongly, uh, in, um, called, was Womboldt versus the Zoning Board of Appeals. And in that case, uh, an applicant came in and increased the degree of non-conformity of a non-conforming guesthouse by two hundred and fifty percent. And interestingly, unlike a non-conforming structure, the Village Code specifically says that a guesthouse is deemed a non-conforming use. Well, the village granted this relief, and not surprisingly, the neighbor said, wait a minute, what's going on here? Two hundred and fifty percent is more than fifty percent. It's the Womboldt case. Well-known amongst the local bar. And the lower court, the Supreme Court, and then ultimately the Court of Appeal, uh, the, uh, appellate division, and, and essentially said, you know, when they passed the revisions to the, uh, state village law and the state town law, which are the same revisions, really that sort of limitations went out the window. It's really up to the discretion of the board, and that fifty percent limitation does not prohibit larger increases. I, I give you that for, you know, for background, I give you that for information. But we're doing it, doing it old school here. We're staying within the fifty percent uh, of the, uh, non-conforming area and only increasing it by thirty-four point seven, which again speaks to the minimal nature of the variance. The home will comply with gross floor area requirements. Uh, so no relief is requested there, comply with height requirements. Uh, really only, that's the only relief that we need is this front yard setback relief. It's also interesting. And if you want, I can give you the surveys on this. I don't know if you need, if you want to be more than happy to get, get them for you, but in terms of, um, in terms of what the other setbacks are in the neighborhood. Nineteen Bailey Road, thirty-five point seven feet. Thirty-one Bailey Road, thirty-four point one feet. Uh, we're at twenty, thirty-two point five. Fifty-nine Bailey Road, twenty-nine point eight feet. Sixty-five Bailey Road, twenty-nine point seven feet. My apologies, I would have gotten that to you faster, which is hard to gather all those surveys. I can get them to you if the board wants them for the record. I'll, I'll just offer them to them and for, I'll put them in tomorrow for, you know, for whatever. You know, you, you might, you probably want to look at them. I mean, there, there are a couple of, there are a couple of homes down there that comply. Richie, Richie and, uh, Amy Plum's house complies down at the easterly end, but it's a much bigger lot. So again, these are lots that were created, uh, by this board and the planning board. Uh, they were allowed these setbacks. I guess, actually query whether or not this relief is actually necessary, because we're, we're, we're building as per the setbacks allowed uh, in the prior, uh, subdivision application, but I thought it better to come to this board and, 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 and make the request. Let me talk a little bit about the porch. Uh, the porch is currently with a certificate of occupancy at thirty-two point five feet. So when my client bought the property, as is required by the Village Code, a new certificate of occupancy was issued on, on every transfer. Now, we're very thorough. I did a research, I did a research of the village records, because I was, Bailey and I are both scratching our head. How did that porch get at thirty-two point five feet? I, I don't see any relief for it. Um, so, uh, the, it appears that, I mean, it's just sort of the minimus thing. The survey was submitted, it complied, the house itself complied in all respects. The porch, uh, is, um, thirty-two point five. You, uh, it's supposed to, probably supposed to be at thirty-four. Uh, so what we did do is add that as a request for relief, but it's not the same porch. We've actually made the porch. Uh, I think we're making it smaller, how many? By fourteen feet. We're gonna narrow the width of it by fourteen feet. So it'd be great if you could leave us, let us keep the porch there. It was good faith reliance, I think, in terms on the, uh, of the certificate of occupancy on that extra couple of feet for the existing porch, but the giveback is that we're making the porch smaller. Uh, but I, I would, to keep things tidy, if you would ask, if I could ask you to grant that, that, that bit of relief. Just going through the rest of the standards, I think the thing speaks for itself. New IA system, no impact on services of the community at large, no increase on demand for services as a single-family residence, it will remain one. Uh, no environmental impacts, a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act as a matter of law. We're not dealing with any wetlands or any sensitive areas here. This is a, a reasonable request. And the variances, um, I, I, I think, you know, and again, uh, Dr. Corman used to say to me, that's why we're in the village, John, not the town. Uh, and she was right, but there are many municipalities where this would be, merely be deemed, uh, an increase, a lateral increase along a, uh, pre-existing non-conforming setback. So in the town of Southampton, uh, and I know it's, we're not in the town, in the village, but, uh, uh, some municipalities in terms of the, the, the gravity or the impact of such a change, in the town of Southampton, this building permit would issue as a right, because all you're, all you're doing, you're merely increasing along a pre-existing non-conforming setback. That's not the rule in the village, but I, I give it to you just for some, the way some municipalities look at this, and I think it speaks to the lack of gravity or, or, or violence to any, any bit of the community or the code itself, or the reasons for zoning, that this application i- is inherent in this application. I, I don't, I don't, hopefully you'll, you'll, you'll agree, since we're not asking for any, come any closer to the road, staying within all the other setbacks, uh, uh, the other, all the, all the limitations, uh, that this is not something that the board would, should be concerned about, either for any sort of precedential value. Uh, from precedent's point of view, this is, would be similar to many variances I've had since I've been lucky enough to practice before this board. And I sort of winced when I said this since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, similar to many variances, the board has granted, uh, you know, we're not increasing, asking for an increase in the setback. Well within that fifty percent rule, even if you want to say that that complies, no impact to the neighborhood, and the name, and as is best demonstrated by the, uh, letters from the name. So, uh, it, it must, I, I, I'd be more than happy to answer any question. Joe Payjack, who is the architect, is, is here. And I have my, my client sitting in the office with me, not on Zoom, because sometimes when you have multiple people in Zoom, there's a feedback issue, and I guess now I learned it also is, uh, maybe a, a wifi hogging issue, so, any event. Sorry for the interruption before. I'm just glad my the other lawyer in the office, Bailey, is more technically savvy than me.
Um, do any other board members have questions or, or comments? Uh, it would be Susan or, or Julia?
No, I think it's pretty well presented and straightforward.
Julia, do you have any comments?
They're not at this time.
I would have, have these, these comments. The, the first, John, is I'm not sure I would agree with you that they are not increasing the non-conformity when they are adding a second floor.
Mark, I said, I didn't say that. I said, I, I said, in the town, y- this would not be deemed an increase in non-conformity. The ver- the reason I'm here is because I agree that it's an increase in the non-conformity. I'm sorry if I was, i- if I was unclear on that. I, I, I'm, I'm before you because I'm increasing the non-conformity. So I don't disagree.
Yeah, well, what, what, I guess what I'm also saying is, most of the house, it seems, is set back further than thirty-four point two feet when I read the survey. You do have porches that.
It kind of job.
Hmm, the house itself, for the most part, you know, is set back. Um, it looks like thirty-eight feet.
Yeah, that, that's, on, on the west side. I see what you're saying, Mark. Yeah, on the west side.
So this house is moving four feet forward, or four feet to the south, where you have a sixty-foot setback, you're, you're, you're increasing, you're, you're moving further, you know, in, into the, uh, the variance territory.
Well, the only, the only thing I'll say to that, Mark, is that, um, I'm stuck with the setback of thirty-two, thirty-four feet for the existing. Well, in any event, I, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue the point with you. You, you're right, I'm increasing that. That's true. I, I think it's de minimis, but I, I, I understand your point, and, and I won't, I won't, I won't argue that.
Well, it, it, were it just a, a single-story intrusion into the front yard, I, you know, it, it, it might have a lower impact. But you're not only moving closer to, um, to the road, where, where, where the setback is supposed to be sixty feet, and, you know, you're, you're, you're already thirty-eight feet, and you're moving even closer to the road, so, you know, even decreasing any setback even further, but you're also changing it from a single story to a double story, to, to a two-story. So to me, the impact is, is greater than than, than, you know, li- listening to you, it, it, there does seem to be an impact. So I guess where that leads me to is I, I would need to see the surveys for nineteen thirty-one or anybody else. Are they?
Perfect.
Story homes? You know, it's not just the setback, it's, it's also, are they? Uh, are they single-story? Because, uh, uh, so you had a variance here for a single-story. You know, at, at, uh, you know, at thirty-eight feet for the most part. So is nineteen and thirty-one, are they, are they two-story? And, and that would be the first thing. Yes, I'd like to see the surveys and, and they, and perhaps the elevations. And then the, the question for the architect for me is, since you're increasing to the north, wouldn't it be feasible for you to increase the size of this house to the north? You're, you're adding a proposed covered porch, you're adding a proposed second-story balcony. It would seem to me that there's an alternate feasible way to expand the size of this house without in any way uh, expanding the, the, uh, the non-conformity of the house. So it's a question for the architect. Had, had that been considered, because one of our, you know, standards, one of our factors that we need to consider is, is there another feasible way for the, uh, for the applicant to accomplish, uh, the benefits that, that they seek to accomplish?
Well, let, let me respond to that first, and, and, and the way you defi- first of all, we'll get you all that information. It's proper information. It should help you in your analysis, and I, I don't disagree, disagree with you. I think it'll help you in, in your analysis. Number one. Number two, even a four-foot in- intrusion, given the character of the neighborhood, I don't, I don't see that as a grave intrusion at all. Uh, that's a de minimis intrusion still, un- under the case law and under all the, the literature, but I, I'll, I'll get you some more information on that. Uh, but number three, what is the, the benefit the applicant wants? Uh, there's a lot of case law on what decides that. I- i- if you can do something in another area, that isn't necessarily the benefit the applicant wants. There's a wonderful open space area in the back of this house. Uh, and the whole idea is to provide an outdoor living area, that, that open space can be part of the sense of place and the enjoyment of the house. That's the benefit that the applicant wants. So let me, if I may, uh, in- in- inform the board a little bit about a case that I was tangentially involved with in Shelter Island. It's called Baker versus Ba- Baker versus Brownlee. And in that case, they wanted a porch, they wanted a variance for a porch on the front of the house. And the Shelter, uh, the Deering Harbors Zoning Board of Appeals said, well, you can put it on the back of the house. And they said, no, the benefit that we want is on the front of the house. And after two trips to the appellate division, in which, interestingly enough, one of the appellate division judge literally rose out of his seat and said, I don't want to see you back here during harbor. They want it on the front of the house. Okay, so that's what you have to analyze the impact on. Okay, uh, the appellate division said, the benefit that the applicant wants is what you have to, what you have to determine. So this, this analysis that Zoning Board of Appeals used to do and say, well, you can do it over there, you can do it over there, you can do it over there, uh, is, has been sharply, uh, dulled, as it were. Talk about mixing metaphors, I'm sorry, but has the, ha- ha- that sort of analysis really doesn't stand the scrutiny if you look at the Baker versus Brownlee case, where you can't just say you can put the porch on the rear of the house. The appellate division said, no, what the applicant wants is, is habitable space on the front of the house, and in this case, I think it's a de minimis, even further encroachment, and I would grant you, Mark, that it is a for, a for, a further encroachment of parts of the habitable space. You're correct. Okay, but I still think it's de minimis. Because, uh, uh, and, and, and that's the benefit the applicant wants. But you're, you're right to ask, for these other surveys, we'll get them for you. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take, we'll, we'll take some consideration a- a- about alternatives. I think you'll probably be back with a, a similar application, but I don't want to speak for, for the applicant and the architect when they, when they, you know, if, if they sit down and, 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 and listen to this further.
Well, I, I, I might guess that Baker versus Brownlee might have had to do with views, so if the architect wants to speak to that, you know, we, we would listen, meaning that, you know, perhaps the porch had a view of, of, uh, you know, a, a, a water view of some sort. Here, where you're expanding on both, where you're expanding here on both sides, I, I'm not sure that that, that the second-story space that you're trying to accomplish couldn't be accomplished by expanding to the north. When, when I'm looking at the plan, I see a proposed covered porch. You could probably still accomplish that. I see, you know, balconies being created on the other side. So in this case, you, you have expansion on both sides. Perhaps the, the case law that you were referencing, you know, had to do with, with setting up a, a porch or an area where, you know, where there was. you know, where there was a view, which you wouldn't.
Well, that's why, that's why I said, there's a view over opens, significant open space in the back. But Mark, we'll take a look at 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 some alternatives as you request.
Yeah, and and to your point, I, yes, I think if it was only a single-story, John, it, I would probably go along with the idea of it being somewhat de minimis. But when I see the elevations and they're doing a s- a two-story expansion into the front, that that gives me a little bit more pause.
Yeah, yes, but remember, what you have to do, what you have to do is balance.
Mm-hmm.
You have to balance this stuff. And and one of the things you have to balance is the impact on the neighborhood to the benefit of the applicant. I I I, you, you's gonna have to demonstrate, you're gonna have to demonstrate some in negative impact to the neighborhood.
Um, yes, or or that, or you demonstrate that there's no negative.
Well, that, but that's what have the neighbors.
Yeah, well, no, but 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 again, you know, the neighbors' letters is helpful, but but seeing the elevations in the surveys might might be more convincing.
Okay, but Mark, Mark, there's a reason why I cited Coleman versus Corman. And I'll I'll give you, I'll give you and your counsel the case, the actual citations. Coleman versus Corman, which is a case I won against this board. And Dolphin versus Shelter Lane, which is a case I won against the zoning board of appeals of Shelter Island, the appellate division affirmed. And in both cases, the court said, the neighbors didn't have a problem with this. How could there be any negative impact? If you look at the balancing test, how could there be any negative impact? I I I think we have some homework to do, Mark. I I'd like to do it. I think
Of course.
We're approaching this, that you and I are probably approaching this at at a little bit of different uh terms, uh, in terms of the gravity. But I I know what you're saying, and let's try to see if we can uh, we can allay some of your concerns.
And then, so can we adjourn this for all purposes?
If you would.
Okay, so I'll.
I just.
Oh, yeah, let's see if anybody from the public wants to be heard, or anybody else, or John, does your client want to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to short circuit anything.
No, 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 thanks.
I have no hands up.
So, uh, Antonette, nobody from the public wants to speak?
No hands.
Okay, so I'll I'll motion to adjourn for all purposes, case number three-one-three-nine forty-three Bailey Road. Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? I, okay, thank you.
Have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Bye-bye.
Luke, do you want to come back?
Hi, guys.
Uh, we'll move to uh case number three-one-four-oh, Carolyn and Joshua Brandt, one-twenty-two Cooper's Farm Road. Um, Antonette is the applicant here to present.
Um, I do not have any hands up. Um, who is the applicant? I could, oh, hold on, I have a Karen Pape Murphy. Let me bring, oh, no, yes, and I also have a Chris Profeta. Would you like me to bring both in or one at a time?
Both can come in.
Okay. Okay. Karen, if you could, put your camera on and unmute yourself, that would be great. And Chris, one second, I'm bringing you over.
Good evening, I'm Karen Pape Murphy. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I represent the owners of one-twenty-two Cooper's Farm Road, and I'm here with the architect, Chris Profeta. Um, this is a property that is, um, it has a um pre-existing uh gross floor area that exceeds what is allowed under the current code uh provision for gross floor area. The house is four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight gross floor area, and the code allows for three thousand five hundred and four gross floor area. My client wants to add a um one hundred and thirty-two square foot uh addition to a dormer. Um, I don't know if I can share the screen. I don't have it.
You do have access to do that.
Okay. Can you see that?
Not yet.
It is freezing.
So we'll, let's. Can you see that now?
Um, no, you're you're actually freezing in and out. Here we go. Okay.
Okay, well, let's.
Karen, we can see it now.
Except for you're muted now.
Okay, this is the east side of the house, the front of the house. Behind that is um a dormer that um exists when they bought the house. Um, there is a, uh, the neighbor to the east, can you see that? Has a um very large uh evergreen hedge that really blocks out the house. And you saw in the the first photo that um, this is, can you see this photo? This is the actual dormer. It's white. It, did that make it to the screen?
No.
Hmm, um. Okay, uh, let me try again. Um, well, any? Okay, I don't know why it's not. Um. Okay, well, it's it's a dormer and um it is basically uh uh, they want to add one hundred and thirty-two square feet. There's one window, and it faces the east, but as in the picture, if you saw the the hedge, the house to the east is is forward of this house, so it's not, it's not directly looking into that house. There's an existing window, that window. Um, there was another window uh you before that. Um, but they want to add now uh two windows to be able to use this space, which um I think Chris, the architect, can talk a little bit about how this will impact it, because it's really kind of in the ru- uh roof, and it's set back, and they want to be able to use this property. Um, they didn't, they didn't, you know, they bought the house as is. Um, and just looking at the five criteria that um this is not an unreasonable change, the character of the neighborhood, you can't see, even see it. It's, it's just extending a little bit. Um, granted, it's a pre-existing use um to allow that space to be used. Um, they can't really, I mean, to get light into that area, there there is really isn't looking at the second factor, really um another method to do that. Um, and again, while this is a a pre-existing use, it um, it's really only one hundred and thirty-two square feet. So it's, in that sense, it's not substantial, and it's not creating any um adverse impact to the neighborhood, because you can't see it. It's already a single-family house. This is just able to have some headspace and walk around, and that's the way the house was designed. Um, looking at the fifth, fifth choice, we did get a uh, a letter from a neighbor, Martin Gil-Martin, in support of this project, which is in the record. Otherwise, I haven't heard from any anybody else, and I notified eighteen people. This house is kind of the style of the neighborhood. Um, it was built prior to the increase of the gross floor area. Uh, and maybe I would ask um uh if Chris could get on and just talk about um what this change will do, the small a- addition uh to the um uh existing house.
Certainly. Hello, everybody. Uh, yes, can can everyone hear me?
Yes, Chris, could you show us also just a, can you show us a better elevation um to show the widening of of the dormer? Do you have that, Karen?
Um.
I'm on a different computer. I can get that. I'll just have to juggle a little bit while I'm speaking about it.
Yeah.
It looked like sheet A-ten is probably going to be the most relevant page to look at.
Okay, let me pull up this computer.
Luke, if you have it, can you share your screen?
So it's in my Dropbox, but it's not rotated. Um.
Okay.
So it's.
All right, so let me, let me switch to Karen. Karen, if you can choose another picture and then share your screen, it'll come up again. It is.
Actually, page, page A-ten is, from what I have on this one anyway, um, front and rear elevation, so north and south.
Um, the sheet that I have says existing eight, A- A- ten is existing south elevation, and then A-ten drawing also is proposed south elevation.
Correct.
Oh, no, wait, that's not the, that's not the one I wanted to say.
That's the page that you want.
Yeah, I know.
Yep, I'll get to that.
There we go, A-A eleven. The east elevations.
Correct. Rotate this.
Sorry for the confusion.
No problem. Correct, so are you able to open that, Karen?
Um.
Can I guide you through it, Karen?
Um, sure, how how?
Okay, so all you have to do is choose your picture on your computer, and then, and then go over to share screen and choose the option that you want off of the choices.
Okay.
And then, share screen again on the bottom right, I believe.
Okay.
Here, guys, I've got it.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Luke.
How's that?
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
So what we have here is is exactly what it says. It's an elevation of the east as it exists presently. And what the Brannons are proposing is, if you look at the dormer that's built into the roof, uh, which is an extension of the second-floor attic space, essentially, to the left of this dormer. They're looking to capture that space uh in the proposed elevation underneath it, that's extending it to the rear of the house um to capture, it's about one hundred and thirty-two feet, to to enable them to utilize that space. So if you can imagine and you see the the roof area that this dormer is built into, this is basically the same building style at, maybe not the same style, but very similar in terms of a framing to a Cape Cod. So a Cape Cod, the roof starts very low and it goes up, and you get your second floor built into that space. That's essentially what they have on this side of this elevation. So they're looking to capture some of that interior attic space uh and just get usable space by building, by extending the dormer and creating headroom. The impact that this has is virtually negligible, because that space already exists. What you're capturing is a small volume of space by extending the door, the dormer, and enabling you to have some headroom. Uh, in terms of impact visually, I see this as very negligible, because what's not shown in this elevation, but you could see in the other photograph that Karen had, is a very large tree that's right over there that blocks probably the entire view. I haven't been in the house next door uh to see if you can see that dormer at all, but it is a fairly large tree. Uh, and as Karen also said, there's also some very high privet, if I'm not mistaken. They may be privet, they may be evergreen. I I'm not sure of the species, but they're also very high. Um, so that's essentially what they're looking to do um for this variance. So.
Chris, right now, you're saying it's it's unfinished attic space, and you're just, um, you know, you're adding, extending the dormer, and you're gonna take it as um habitable space.
That's what they're proposing for the area that's hatched in on the left.
Sure.
Yes.
Well, it it seems like a minimal impact on on the neighborhood, and and I can understand the benefit to the applicant. Julia or Susan, do you have any, any comments or questions?
No. No, I'm in agreement with you, Mark. It seems like uh, it seems like a reasonable request to be making.
Agreed.
So I, um, Joe, we can, uh, we can close this for all purposes and and go to decision on it.
Unless uh someone in.
Unless there's anybody.
Yeah, we we can find out. I know, I know Mr. Gil-Martin um put pen to paper. Um, Antonette, is anybody in in the public who wants to be heard?
No, I don't have Mr. Gil-Martin. I do have Mary Jane on. I don't know, she has any comment, Mary Jane? No, nobody's hands are up.
Is Mary Jane on for for something else? But what, let's, let's get to that after this. Um, so I'll I'll motion to um.
Excuse me, Chair, Mary Jane's hand did just go up now.
Okay.
Let me hang on one second, I'll bring her in.
I know she has an adjournment request for for Two Meadow Lane. Um, I may have missed it. I don't know if the board formally accepted that request.
Uh, maybe we need to do that. Is um, can we, can we find out, is is it about Two Meadow Lane? In which case, we won't close the public hearing. Well, well.
I was bringing her in. For some reason, it's just stolen, just, I I am bringing her in. It's just taking a second, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Karen, sorry.
I'll help Antonette.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, it says she declined, Kat, so I guess she's. All right, so her hands down. Okay, wait, it's up.
But Alex, to your point, be before we close the public hearing, we'll we'll accept the uh Two Meadow Lane adjournment. And with respect to this case, I'm, I'll motion to close case number three-one-four-oh, one-twenty-two Cooper's Farm Road for all purposes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Good night.
And all in favor?
I.
I.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good care, everybody.
Okay, so go- going back, I guess, um, thanks for the reminder, Alex, we will um I'll motion to accept the applicant's request for adjournment of case number three-one-three-oh, estate of Janet Stein, Two Meadow Lane uh for an adjournment to September thirteenth, two oh two-two. Can I have a second on that?
I'll just note, Mary Jane's hand is up now.
Yeah, it is up. I was waiting to.
Okay, so then why don't we let let her come in?
Okay, hang on one second. Okay, she's coming in right now. Okay, Mary Jane, if you can unmute and um put your screen camera on, please.
Hello, I I'm only here for the adjournment. Uh, you had skipped over it, so I I was waiting, I didn't want to be rude.
No, no, thank you, our, our, we're just.
Time constraints, so I just wanted to make sure that you were going to entertain the adjournments before you.
Yes, we're, we're gonna motion to approve the adjournment to September thirteenth. Okay, thank you, Mary Jane. Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn Two Meadow Lane, case number three-one-three-oh, to September thirteenth, two oh two-two. Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Okay, so um Two Meadow Lane, case number three-one-three, I was adjourned until September thirteenth. And then we're gonna move to executive session. We have a little time, if that's okay with everybody.